It is six o'clock, we'll go ahead and get the meeting started. If you would, please rise. Pastor Jeff, clear. Chapel Hill Baptist, if you'd come forward and lead us in the mission.
We just want to make a prayer. Father God, we thank you so much for allowing us to come together. We thank you for this council, Holy Father. I pray your wisdom upon them as well, Lord, that they would just seek your wisdom. We thank you for their service. We thank for their service to our city, Lord. We also thank you for the city of Odessa. We pray that our citizenship, Holy Father, would seek your face. Also, Lord, that we would seek and have a servant's heart for our fellow man as well, Lord. Ask you your blessing upon this time, and we'll give you all the praise, we'll give you all the glory. In your Saint Jesus' precious name we pray. Amen.
Amen. At this time, council member Bryant will lead us in both pledges.
Good question, Mary. I'm glad. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On Texas soil, I pledge allegiance to Texas, one street, one one, indivisible.
You may be seated. We do have one proclamation.
We've got a proclamation from the city. Says City of Odessa Proclamation. Whereas Odessa Council for the Arts and Humanities was formed in 1978, and today its membership comprises over thirty art agencies, individual artists, and art-minded citizens. Its mission is to support and promote the arts of Odessa and Ector County through cultural tourism, art education, art advocacy, and through the support of the City of Odessa's hotel hotel tax line. The Odessa Council of Arts and Humanities provides grants for the creative industry in Odessa, increasing the quality of life for residents and encouraging cultural tourism. The Art Council creates opportunities for residents, cultural tourists, such as Hot Summer Nights, One Book Odessa, Books in the Basin, and the recently resurrected Odessa Shakespeare Festival. The Odessa Council of Arts and Humanities manages the City of Odessa's public art collection, with decent including Joe Barrington's Longhorn Bull, Tom Lee's Stampede Girl, Traffic Fox Art Project, and the forthcoming Gateway 2010. Now therefore, I, David R. Turner, by the virtue of authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of Odessa, hereby proclaim, June thirteenth, two thousand seventeen, Arts Appreciation Day.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, City Council. Everybody here speaks to talk, but very quickly, if you are a member of the Arts Council or an organization that has received funding through the grants program, would you please stand and be recognized? And we have asked Jane Knox from the middle of Odessa Symphony and Corral to say a very quick word of thanks to the City Council.
Well, thank you. Do I talk to you or to the audience?
You talk to the audience.
There are more of them. Well, I'm Jane Knox, and I'm with the middle of Odessa Symphony and Corral, according to her. But, you know, I came to Odessa sixty years ago, would you believe? And when I came out, my daddy lived in the Almanac, and there were fifty-four thousand people in Odessa. They're double that now, aren't they? And one thing that has grown has been arts and humanities, and I do thank you for that. It's been so great. But I will go back to my notes and thank the City Council for your annual support of the arts and culture of our city through funding provided by Odessa Council of Arts and Humanities. It would be very difficult for our Symphony to meet our commitment to enriching lives through music by providing quality music program and music education program without the annual Odessa Council of the Arts and Humanities grant support, and so we thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next, I would like to move the citizens' comments up. We have two citizens that would like to speak. Mr. Jim Recker.
I'll begin first.
I gave the jury a day of justice.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. I'm Jim Recker, seventy-one hundred Tobosa. Only thing I came about to talk about was what I heard from the mayor at the luncheon about the efforts on grant, which I think are terrific. I wanted to bring to the council's attention that back in the early eighties, when Bob Bryant was the mayor, a similar proposal, I'm not sure it's the same one you're putting forth now, but a proposal to do some work on grant and to make some of the streets one-way, which back in those days was considered a hospital corridor, but today, with the new convention center, I'd just like to ask the council, while they're doing that, if they would like to revisit that particular proposal and see if it wouldn't be beneficial to the city to make third, fifth, or fourth, and sixth, or some of those streets one-way, one or the other. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The next one is Raymond Armendaras.
Does it work?
Yes, sir.
Is that better?
That's good.
Test this. Again. This is Ramon Armendaras, a district concerned citizen. This is like beating a dead horse, like beating five, what is it, seven dead horses and an old gray mare, you know? I've been here before, you know? You need to do your job as far as, you know, it's not your money, it's a taxpayer's money. I know if you're trying to run a business, a sandwich shop, or insurance company, whatever, I know you wouldn't be running it like that. You'd be out of business. You'd be out of business. You'd be out there selling tacos instead of submarines, selling dollar tickets instead of insurance policies. This is crazy, man. And three minutes doesn't cover it. It doesn't cover it, you know? Y'all were elected to make a difference, you know, and you haven't yet. It's starting to be like a good old boy thing. Hispanic Chamber, I'm Hispanic, okay? You're throwing money down a rat hole. That's what you're doing. You're throwing it down a rat hole because you can hire any other, a new marketing guy from UTPB that has the technology, education, the marketing skills for a lot less money than you're trying to pay Mr. Chavez. I don't see how, you don't see numbers, you know? It's like there are a bunch of owls, and the more light we shine on you, the less you see, you know? So stop being an owl. Look at all the data. Look at the results that the Hispanic Chambers have done, the results he's done. Zero. You're throwing the money away, and it's not your money. You wouldn't run a business like that. You wouldn't pay me that much money and not get results. I'd be out looking for a job. Ah, I don't see, second time business, I don't see why, you know? This man, I mean, I've got a college education. I don't know if this man does or not, you know? Hire someone who's got the education, the background, marketing skills to do that job for a lot less money. And he's going to say, well, sometimes I know, sometimes I don't know, you know, what he's doing. But, you know, he's quick to hire relatives, you know, to work with him, you know? It's like, that you're going to reap the rewards. I'm here again to try to make you see that you're making a mistake. I know the American built by himself. He needs you guys to back him up, and you're not doing it. You're not backing him up. It's just, it should be justice. It's justice, not just us. It's justice. Back him up. Help him build his job. And you're not doing it, man. I'm ashamed of you. I'm totally ashamed of you. If this is my company, I'd far only. So?
Thank you for your comments.
I'll see you all next week.
Thank you, sir. Next, we move to Consider an Agenda. I believe, hey, we have motion to pull up.
Make a motion that I'll reconsider agenda with the Dean, so we can discuss it.
Okay.
We can't clear down.
Make a motion that we remove item number D on the agenda, so we can discuss a little bit further.
You have your motion. We have a second.
Second.
Second, council member Graff. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
So, vote is four to one. Do we have a motion to approve the rest of the consent agenda?
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. I believe considering ordinance to lower speed limit. Ramon.
Good evening, Mayor, good evening, Mayor, Council. This item is to consider an ordinance to lower the speed limit, and Techstat has completed a recent study and has determined to lower the existing speed limit on US Highway thirty-five south of Interstate twenty. It is proposed to lower the speed limit to fifty-five miles per hour in front of Ector County Law Enforcement Center, and then lower the existing seventy-five miles per hour to seventy miles per hour to the Kren County line. This agenda item is of the request of Techstat, so that the city's speed ordinances match with what they have posted in the field. I'll be happy to answer your question.
It's just that I had quite a bit of phone calls from people that had heard that this was going to happen, and they live out in that area, and they were talking about what are going to be the signs that are going to be put out there, and as far as for the traffic that's coming in from the sides, are there going to be more signs put out there so that people can know to keep an eye out for that?
Yes, the traffic department will work with Techstat on signage, actually. There will be some signs. I don't know the specifics of it, but there will be some of those.
The one specifically that they talked was the members from the Pleasant Farm area. They're talking about that street pop-off, that there's, they've actually put lights out there. Sorry, now it looks a whole lot better, and people can see, but they were talking about the signage, that before you get to that intersection from the south or the north, there's really nothing indicating to people that there's traffic, cross traffic, coming through there.
We'll work with Techstat on that.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Other questions?
Yeah, I had someone ask me about that also. When will this actually take effect?
I don't know that's recent.
Larry, can you answer that? When will this take effect?
It'll be thirty days from Friday.
Okay. And thank you for explaining that, Ramon.
Other questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Still moving.
Second.
A motion, we have a second. Any more discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next, under other council actions, consider approval of emergency expenditures of funds to replace failed HBACs in City Hall.
Good evening, Council, Mr. Mayor. This agenda, yes. Council, Mr. Mayor, this agenda item is to consider the approval to amend the current general fund budget with an additional ninety-five thousand dollars from the general fund fund balance. This amendment, as the mayor stated, will allow for the install and purchase of a new chiller for the City Hall location, and this is considered an emergency purchase. Any questions I may address?
How are monies in the account?
It's in the general fund account. Yes, we have to pull it from fund balance to add it to this year's accounts.
Okay, other questions?
Yeah, how does this compare to putting in an entirely new system? Because my mind says, okay, we're having trouble now, next year we're going to have more trouble, or six months from now with another part.
Yes, ma'am. So, we have three chiller units within City Hall. Each unit would cost the ninety, approximately ninety-five thousand to replace. This one unit has failed, and this would get us back to getting status quo of air temperature for City Hall. There has been talk of us looking at facility studies to ensure that we don't run into issues like this in the future, and those plans are in the works.
Okay, that's what I was wanting to hear. Thank you.
Okay, other questions? Okay, if not, I'll entertain a motion.
Still moving.
A motion and a second. Any more discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Next, we'll open up the public hearing to consider the designation of the area where the investment zone under nine establishes values. Mr. Burnett.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of council. Obviously, the item here is to establish a reinvestment zone for the purpose of the tax abatement with Glazer Beer and Beverage Company. And Max Willie is with me this evening. We've met with the council previously on this project, but I can review the details of it. Basically, it's a hundred twenty thousand square feet plus or minus of facility for a hundred existing jobs to be retained and ten new jobs to be created. The company is asking for incentives from Odessa Development Corporation, which they have considered, which could be brought to you at a later meeting, but also the tax abatement is a part of the project as well. Capital investment is going to be at least twelve million dollars for this project. We would be happy to answer any questions that we haven't answered already, or if you have any questions about any other part of the project.
What's the name of the zone again?
Reinvestment Zone Under Nine, I think, is what the...
Yeah, it's number nine.
What is the name of the... It's Grow Odessa Property and the Grow Odessa Business Park.
It's Glazer.
Glazer Beer and Beverage Company is the company. Grow Odessa is the landowner for the property that's going to be sold to the company.
Is that Grow Odessa Park West? Is that still the same location?
It's the same location as we've discussed before. It's twenty acres out of a hundred ninety-one acre tract that's just north of I-20 off of Meadow.
And it's in Ector County?
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Hampton, did I answer your question?
Okay, this is a public hearing, so at this time I will open up the floor for any public comment on this agenda item. Is there anyone that would like to come forward? Okay, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Do we have a motion?
Still moving.
Have a motion? Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll open up the public hearing to consider the approval of a request by Leeco Properties, Larry Lee owner, LCA consultant, to rezone from special dwelling district surface drainage to special dwelling district. Mr. Brenner.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The City of Odessa fourteen notices related to this request. We did not have any notices returned. We did not receive any written protests. We did receive one written approval. The property involved in the request is located at the southeast corner of intersection Winchester Avenue and proposed Paladura Drive. Property is currently zoned special dwelling district surface drainage, and this site is vacant. Land use in the area consists of residential development, vacant land. The applicant and property owner in this case is Leeco Properties, and the purpose of the zone change from special dwelling district surface drainage to this special dwelling district would alter the surface area of the detention basin. It will not alter the capacity to hold water, and will not alter the drainage in this area in any way. That's all been worked out. And this would facilitate the development of fifteen single-family lots in this area that are six thousand square feet in area and above. The area is located in the northern part of the City of Odessa's future land use map. This site is considered one of the prime areas for new residential growth in Odessa, and this zoning request for the site and the proposed development design is consistent with the city's priority for attractive, safe, and connected roadways with the intended land use in mind. And the Planning and Zoning Commission did give unanimous approval to this request, and the staff does concur with the commission's recommendation for approval. We'll be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions from council?
I do. I worry just a little bit, and hope you can explain, changing from the surface drainage. What are the possibilities that homes built in this area will flood?
Mr. Graff, the possibilities are not that great because the development standards for the homes will be a minimum of at least a foot, the finished floor level will be a minimum of at least a foot above the flood elevation level, and the engineering between the consulting firm and the city's engineering department to alter the surface drainage to maintain capacity and not raise the water level has all been worked out. So, I'm very confident that there will not be any flooding of homes.
Okay, my next question is, what do you actually mean by special dwelling? How does that differ from a regular house?
It's, it doesn't refer to the structure itself. It refers to the lot and the setback standards, and what this is, is something that's a little bit different from the norm of what Odessa is. Normally, a single-family dwelling has a front yard of twenty-five feet setback, and this particular zoning district is going to be a twenty-foot front yard setback, so that therefore will make it a special dwelling district with just that small variation in the front yard setback. All the other setbacks, lot coverages and all that are what the norm is. It's just that one particular setback.
Thank you.
Okay, are there any other questions from council? If not, this is a public hearing, so at this time I will open up the floor for any public comment on this agenda item. If you would, please come forward. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Do we have a motion?
Still moving.
Have a motion? We have a second?
Second.
Any more discussion from council? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number four, open up public hearing to consider the approval by request by Beaton Bow Homes to rezone from multifamily two to planned development single-family. Mr. Ray.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. The property involved in this request is located northwest of the intersection of Post Evans Boulevard and East eighty-seventh Street. This site is currently zoned multifamily two and special dwelling district. This site is vacant, and land use scenario is vacant land. The applicant and property owner in the case is Beaton Bow Homes, and the purpose of this zone change request would consolidate the property under one zoning, and this would facilitate future single-family residential development. This area is located also in the City of Odessa's northern part of the Town for the Future Land Use Map. This is considered one of the prime areas for new residential development. The zoning request for this site and the proposed development's design is consistent with the city's priority for attractive, safe, and connected roadways. The Planning and Zoning Commission did give unanimous approval to this request with the following condition, that a site plan approval would be required prior to any residential development on the property, and this site plan would come back to the council for their approval prior to any development. We'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from council? If not, this is a public hearing, so at this time we will open up the floor for any public comment on this agenda item. If you would, please come forward. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Do we have a motion?
Still moving.
Motion and a second. Any more discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Ray. Next, we move to ordinances. Consider an update to the truck route ordinance. Mr. Ramon.
This item is to consider an update to the truck route ordinance, and this revision to the truck route ordinance would effectively eliminate all local truck routes within the city. And the proposed truck routes would be Interstate twenty and Loop three thirty-eight. Trucks having a delivery within the city of Odessa would be required to use the shortest route from the proposed truck route, and this proposal has been reviewed and approved by Techstat Austin Traffic Headquarters, and after approval of this ordinance, the city and Techstat will board under an agreement to install the appropriate signage. I'll be happy to answer your question.
Any questions from council? This is changing the truck routes from being inside the city to exclusively Loop three thirty-eight and I-20.
Hey, but my question... My question I have is driven by some of the apartments out here, and you see a lot of eighteen-meters parked up there from people that are working in the oilfield. This is going to eliminate that?
I would say so.
Okay, so in other words, if they have no business whatsoever inside the city limits, they should not be driving them, and if they do, they will get stopped?
Yes.
And the appropriate amount of information to educate the population about this has been started, or it will be started?
It will be stopped.
Thank you.
So, this will exclude Second Street?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, what are you going to do about the businesses on Second Street that have B-line movement filter and changes oil? Second Street, you have trucks built there, you have a couple of businesses that are supposed to do too, that do work on heavy trucks?
Probably that needs to be worked out, yeah.
Worked out, I mean, to allow those people to go and do.
Councilman, that's a destination for those trucks, so they'll be allowed to travel to that location.
Okay, other questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Still moving.
Have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next, consider authorization of the abandonment of portion of Dotsey Avenue.
Texas Tech University has requested that the city abandon Dotsey Avenue between Third and Fourth Streets, and the school is planning to build a teaching and meeting facility. The city will retain a twenty-foot utility and access easement, and Texas Tech has agreed to the compensation due for this abandonment. It is the recommendation of staff to to decide on it. I'll be happy to answer your question.
Are there any questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Still moving.
Motion and a second. Any more discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Ramon. Next, remove from the table and consider adopting a downtown overlay zone for the City of Odessa. So we will need a motion to remove it from the table?
Still moving.
Second.
A motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? It is now back on the table.
Thank you for having me. The downtown overlay zone is intended to complement in conjunction with the two thousand sixteen comprehensive master plan and downtown Odessa master plan at the City of Odessa. The overlay zone will implement the vision for more walkable, vibrant, mixed-use neighborhood. The overlay area will be Second Eight Streets, Sandy Houston, the Hancock avenues. The shut only applies to new construction coming into downtown in that overlay area. Drive-through lanes, auto service ways, gas station campy shall not be located with frontage along Grand Avenue or Texas Avenue. There are other building interface requirements, including some specific pipe width and depth minimums, as well as frontage attachments and sure requirements and more.
Okay, are there any questions?
Who's the professional planning consultant?
I can answer that question. Gateway, yes, thank you.
Okay, other questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Still moving.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we move to item eight, consider adoption of the social host ordinance. Next, we move to item eight, consider adoption of the social host ordinance. Mr. Long.
Thank you, Mayor. As you're aware, there are currently criminal prohibitions against furnishing of alcohol to minors, particularly at parties and in situations where behavior gets out of hand. What this would do would not be a prohibition against the furnishing of the alcohol to the minor, but providing the venue for furnishing the alcohol to the minor. In other words, if you rent a place, or if you host a party yourself, instead of the police having to prove that you furnished the alcohol directly to the minor, all they have to do is prove that you invited the people to be served alcohol when you knew there would be minors present and inviting. This would be true whether or not it was at your own house, or if it was in a hotel room, assembly hall, whatever the situation. Now, there is an affirmative defense that if the people come in uninvited, if you have given your house, or you have rented a venue, and you have no intention for drinking to occur, and it does occur, then you have an affirmative defense that you are not guilty because you simply did not have the desire to furnish the property for drinking. And basically, that's what it does. It's class C misdemeanor and would be prosecuted in the municipal court.
Okay, questions from council?
How's that proved? You said that. How's that proved?
It's got the same...
Someone came uninvited, there was no intent of drinking alcohol, yet all of a sudden alcohol is there. How do you prove that you did not do this?
Well, you've hit on the question that they have now on the furnishing of it. The feeling was it'd be much easier to prove that you were having the party, or you were furnishing the place for the party than to prove that you participated in the distribution of the alcohol to the minor. But it's all going, it's still beyond a reasonable doubt, it's still criminal standards that you're going to face an incriminal prosecution, and it's going to be through evidence that has to be introduced through witnesses. So you're going to have to call the people that will testify to the facts of the case.
Teenagers.
If necessary, teenagers, yes.
Chief Kirby, would you like to come up and say anything?
I'm about as worried as Malcolm is about this. I think it's good, but I think you have a huge loophole out there, and I would think that if someone is hosting a party and somebody shows up with alcohol, I would think they would need to call the police right then and there and notify the police of that to come remove that person from the party if they can't remove them themselves. Because to me, that's just too big a loophole. I think we need to tighten that up. Chief, maybe you can help us with that.
No, I totally agree with that. I mean, if someone's at a party and there's minors there, and someone brings alcohol, introduces alcohol to that party, police, they should obviously replace immediately. As far as the ordinance is concerned, I mean, this is just another tool in our toolbox to help us deal with minors consuming alcohol. So, as far as we're concerned, it's a good thing.
But how do you close that loophole, let's say one bad apple shows up? No one knows about this bad apple, or the alcohol, what just will happen before this is called alcohol disturbance and they see the man with alcohol?
Well, I think it would be, you would look at the entire party. If you had one person there with alcohol, I don't see that we would cite the homeowner at that point. You know, we're talking about someone that's hosting a large party, and it's disturbing the neighborhood, that sort of thing.
Like, obviously.
Absolutely, yes, sir. You know, reasonable, yes, sir.
Okay, other questions? Okay, if not, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Motion and a second. Any more discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much, Chief. Next, consider amending Article six dash eight and see the Odessa Code of Ordinances entitled Public and Semi-Public Swimming Pools. Mr. Long.
Thank you, Mayor. This is the attempt to impart what the legislature has placed upon us as rules and restrictions for the use of public and semi-public pools. This has been worked out with our health department, and it basically covers the postings of warnings and instructions, the disinfection and the quality of the water in the pools, and the permitting requirements that precede being able to open.
In other words, we got the hand of this from the state, and we have to change the ordinances.
Yes, sir.
Any questions, Flair?
What pool would that affect?
It's just a semi, it would be if you had an apartment pool, if you had a public pool, it's not a private pool, on the instance.
But apartment pool would fall for that?
Yes.
Okay, any other questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Long. Next, under resolutions, consider approval of the tax incentive guidelines from two thousand seventeen to two thousand nineteen. Mr. Brennan.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. These are tax payment, tax incentive guidelines approved by the Tax and Senate Committee at their last meeting. We also discussed this at the Finance Committee last week. These are the same guidelines that the council approved two years ago. They're required to be approved by the council every two years. This particular time, there is one change to guidelines that we discussed about local business moving from a business in Odessa to another facility in Odessa. The previous guidelines did not allow them to qualify for tax payment. We are changing that as a recommendation from the Tax and Senate Committee to allow that with certain standards and guidelines, but that is the only change to previously approved tax incentive guidelines. Again, these guidelines set out the minimum standards and requirements for capital investment and joint creation to qualify for tax payment.
Okay, any questions?
Could you explain in a little more detail why they decided to change that and allow a company to move from one location and seek to another? What was the purpose?
The reasoning was because it was seen as did not provide an incentive to maybe improve a building that's empty currently in Odessa. This would provide an incentive to move to a building that maybe right now is unimproved or empty, or could use some improvements. This would give an incentive for them to move to that building or facility or location and do some improvements on that. And then also to have the ability to sell the current facility if they're in. It just provided another incentive to improve particular areas of Odessa. And downtown is included in the tax incentive guidelines.
I view that actually the opposite. I see when a company moves from here to another place, we have another empty building in Odessa, I would rather they stay where they are and improve what they have. We just, we don't need more empty buildings just because someone wants to build a new one.
This was not a staff recommendation, it came from the committee specifically. Just a question of mine was in there, and then they made a recommendation to do that, and the committee approved it. So it's up to y'all. That was just the recommendation from the committee to the city council.
Okay, other questions?
Well, I would say the other side of that is if Philly wants to upgrade his business and move to a larger building to accommodate more customers, he shouldn't be penalized because he wants to do that. So I wouldn't want to hold people down in order to make them stay in a smaller building.
Okay, other questions or comments?
I move for approval.
Okay, we have a motion for approval, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
All opposed.
So the vote is four to one. Thank you very much, Mr. Brennan.
Thank you.
Next, number eleven, consider resolution supporting the Safe to Save as an app to enhance driver safety. Mr. Marrero.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The item before you tonight is for your consideration, is a consideration of the support resolution for Safe to Save. If you recall from last week, we had a presentation from the representative, last council, I mean, rather, the representative from Safe to Save, and he gave you a good overview. We do have another representative this evening, Miss Kimmy Brandon. But the app is one that encourages safe driving by rewarding those individuals who download this free app to get rewards from local businesses. And I'm going to let Ms. Brandon elaborate a little bit more on the app.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. We just appreciate you considering this. Yes, this app rewards people when they don't text and drive, and it's really great because it gives the drivers points as they drive, and then they can use those points in Odessa businesses. So it's a win-win for the drivers, for the citizens of Odessa, and for the businesses of Odessa.
And the app doesn't cost the city anything, we simply endorse the use of the app.
It also doesn't cost the drivers anything, it's a free app.
Questions?
Well, after meeting last time, a few days later, I downloaded the app.
Oh, great.
So I built this fifteen hundred points.
Wow!
Just doing the drive, because I drive a lot sometimes.
Excellent.
But it's going to be a good...
Awesome, I'm glad to hear that you did that. Very good. Unfortunately, we don't have many businesses on our Odessa side yet, but we are working on that. And so, we're trying to spread the word right now if any businesses...
You've got Mahama Bucks on there.
That's right, and Baskin Robbins. So we're set with the sugar, yeah.
Actually, I think it's good.
Thank you, thank you, we appreciate it.
Why is the city endorsement so important to this app? Because at the end of the day, if we endorse it, what is it going to give you? In other words, an advantage over a competitor that wants to do the same thing? Or why is the city so important? Because you really don't need the city to do this, right?
No, we don't need the city, we just want the city because it helps us just to have be work together with the city. And we love to have, like, the other cities have all sponsored us, and so we have your logo, like, we have the City of Midland's logo, I passed out cards, and we have the City of Midland's logo on our cards. And so we would put your city logo on our cards whenever we pass them out around Odessa. And so it just shows that we are working with you guys, and that you guys are proactive in wanting to have safer drivers on the road.
Would you mind if a competitor used it, or somebody else used the same logo or the same support?
Oh, we wouldn't have any say in that. I don't think we have a competitor, yet, of course. And she, it's a patent pending, so nobody's doing the same thing she's doing. And this is not, I mean, I know that state, there are different texting and driving apps, but there aren't anything like this. And like I said, she's got a patent pending on this app.
Yeah.
So, yeah, we want, and we, she is very, she's very team-oriented, that she thinks everyone should work together to eliminate texting and driving.
And don't get me wrong, I mean, coming from the insurance industry, I know how important it is for driver safety. But the one thing that I'm concerned about is the fact that, you know, I would hate to just appoint this, you know, right to you. If anything, I would like to encourage anybody else that has anything that encourages drive, safe driving and not texting and not using your phone, should be allowed to be able to use the city of Odessa. Because I think we're all going to support that, right?
Right, I think she would, the owner of the app would say exactly the same thing.
It would appear to me, though, that us endorsing would help you also get sponsorships to take care of the Mike Rogers out there that don't want to go to Baskin Robbins.
Absolutely, it would absolutely help us, yeah. I don't know if somebody's against Baskin Robbins, but yes, that's why we come to you. It would be very helpful.
Sure, it'd be very helpful.
Yes.
Give you credibility, would you just get a process?
Credibility is a good word, yes.
Okay, other questions?
So, I mean, Mary, I don't know if we would approve this, and we still have the right to, if anybody else comes up and they have something that encourages safe driving, they would still be able to give this to them?
Yes.
Or do you need to make another motion to allow this for them to use it, but anybody else that has that kind of driving, safe driving encouragement?
If it's written so, it would be not as good, even more around if, as you remain in the same state.
Fair enough, okay. Thank you so much.
Okay, other questions from council? Not, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved. Second.
Have a motion and a second.
Thank you.
Any more discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Next, consider a resolution authorizing the transfer of funds from the Stormwater Sewer account to the general fund account. Ms. Shaw.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is more of a housekeeping item than anything, I think. We have an open space on the fourth floor, and we need to create two offices, one for the incoming Assistant Public Works Director, and one for the existing Stormwater Manager. And in order to do that, we need to transfer, officially transfer the funds from the Stormwater account into the general fund. We'll be transferring seven thousand eight hundred ninety-four dollars from Stormwater into the general fund, and a little over eleven thousand will come from the Public Works Department into the same fund, for a total of nineteen thousand five hundred thirty-four dollars for the total construction.
Any questions?
Was this part of the budget for the remodel, or...
No, sir, it's an independent project.
Were you just taking care of it at the same time? Yes, sir.
Okay, any more questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Have a motion and a second, any more discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Shaw. Next, move to appointment of boards.
Mayor?
Yes?
I would like to nominate Section B of the Odessa Development Corporation. I'd like to nominate Melanie Holman as District Two appointee to the Odessa Development Corporation. And all right, y'all, I'd like to introduce you at this time. Come on over. I'd like to introduce you all to Melanie Holman. Her husband Steve's back there in the back. I gotta introduce you anyway. But anyway, this is my appointee for the District Two, part of the ODC, and want to give her an opportunity to introduce herself to you all, as well as if you have any questions to ask her why she's here. Melanie?
Thank you, good night. Hi, I'm Melanie Holman, and I'm very excited about the opportunity to serve the city in this manner, and hopefully do all that I can to be part of increasing employment opportunities here in Odessa.
Okay, any questions from Ms. Holman?
I don't have any questions, but... I wanted to let you know that as soon as Mr. Bryan nominated you, my phone started going crazy. People were calling me and complimenting me on you, not me complimenting you, but complimenting you about being appointed. Everybody's very excited, it's people that I know very close to me, and if they're excited, I'm excited. Number one, there's many factors that you're going to bring to the table that I think is really going to help not just the ODC, but the city council and everybody behind it, because you've been on the compliance committee for a while, so you know all the ins and outs, so I think it's going to be good. And I wrote some of the comments down because I wanted to say them to you, because they were excited. So if they're excited, I'm excited. You know, you're a non-biased person, you love the city of Odessa, you want to stand up against unfairness and do what's right for the city of Odessa as a whole. So at the end of the day, I mean, that's what we need, somebody that's going to be fair, somebody that's going to be tough, somebody that's going to hold people accountable, and not just one particular group. I mean, it's got to be for everybody, and so I'm really, really, really looking forward to working with you.
Well, I appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions?
Well, it's not necessarily a question, but I'm very excited to have a young person that wants to be involved, because the decisions that are made today are the decisions that our young people, families are going to be playing with. And I want to thank you, and I want to encourage more young people to get involved with our government.
Thank you.
Okay, other questions?
I've got one more thing. Do we...
I've got one more thing. Do we, congratulations on your nominee.
Any other questions?
No other questions. I would nominate that we accept Melanie as District Two rep for the Odessa Development Corporation.
That's a form of motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Congratulations. Chairman Carlson, I believe they said you're old is the way I picked the conversation. Mr. Long, MOU TV, are we getting close on that recommendation? Are we going to go ahead and re-point?
We're getting very close.
Okay. Community Development Advisory Committee, Districts One, Three, and Five. You want to reappoint these, or...
I'm not ready yet.
Okay.
As you said, you want to...
Well, Barbie, also pretty certain.
Okay. So, Barbie, you're not ready yet?
Barbie, Miss Barrett?
Mayor, can we go ahead and appoint those at this time?
Sure.
Traffic Advisory. Are they willing to serve again?
I'm three, yes.
Okay, is everybody here?
I'm five.
Okay. Everybody else good?
Yes, sir.
Okay. MOU TV, we will skip this time. We have two going on the committee, excuse me, Community Development Advisory Committee, and three going back on the Traffic Advisory Committee. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
What was that again?
Uh, two are going back. Councilmember Graff is going to put hers on later. So there'll be two going on Community Development, as long as you're okay with it. And then we'll have three going on Traffic Advisory, as long as council members are still happy with their...
Those two, Community Development Advisory Committee, are...
Sorry.
No, I'm reserving.
Okay, you want to hold off?
Yeah.
Okay. Then we'll approve Councilmember Gonzalez's on Community Development, and approve, are y'all ready for the traffic, or do you want to wait until next time?
I'm fine.
I'm good.
Okay. Okay. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
And a second? Motion in second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Next, under appointment of officers. Building Board of Appeals, we still have a receiving application. Who's called it?
No, but for other ones that are going to be reappointed, Paul Weaver and Will Spencer and Jerry Popovich.
I want to hold off on mine.
Okay. Permian Basin MHMR?
Yes, Margaret Jones is going to serve there.
We have a young person with eighteen PBs that sit in, an application for that, a professor. So I would like for us, since this is a council appointment, to us to talk with other of those people.
Okay.
At future day.
Uh, zoning board of adjustments?
They're all willing.
And I want to hold off on mine also. I've now had a chance to talk to any of mine there.
Okay.
Me as well.
Okay.
On the mayor on board survey, I'm ready to talk to my opponent.
Okay.
I'm also ready.
Okay. You get those one?
Yes.
Uh, CRW D?
We need to interview this.
Can we just have a couple of... So our two CRW D guys will come on forward. Mr. Hainer and Mr. Dr. Gil. Good evening. Gentlemen?
Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Questions for our CRW D guys?
First of all, can you tell us what's going on now with CRW D? Where are we with the water situation and...
Water situation is that the lakes, the lakes gained water this year even after all the usage. So that's a positive. Yes, it's only twenty-five percent of capacity, but we gained, we gained water after usage. We have not had to open the wellfields in Ward, except for just to keep the pipelines wet.
Right.
And we're doing a lot of rehab.
With what?
Well, the system, the system's extremely old. All the stuff that was put in, particularly for Lake Thomas and Lake Spence, spending a lot of money rehabbing pump stations and tank each that are forty and fifty years old and have weight exceeded their life expectancy. We've got about a two-plus year supply of water in the lakes. We've got the groundwater in Ward County, and we continue to look for alternate sources of sustainable water.
As far as the maintenance, all these are funds that are within the normal budget out of making stuff.
Yes.
Right.
They're all coming out of contingency funds.
So we haven't borrowed more money for those repairs?
No.
No, ma'am.
Okay, and you're looking for more sources of water. Have you had anyone come to you lately asking you to consider...
Not, not a direct proposal.
Okay. Other questions?
What's the atmosphere for Odessa going out and finding more sources of water ourselves? And CRW D, what's the atmosphere about that?
I think the CRW D would love to have anybody break a proposal to us, and we'll help out the city in that vein, for sure.
So I can say, our Easter egg basket, we need lots of eggs in that basket, and we don't have them.
We totally agree, but we, we're in better shape now than we were. We would like to be perfect, but the first perfect person to stand up.
Well, and, and Ms. Graff, we, the Odessa group as a whole, I think's done a great job of prohibiting the district from spending a lot of money looking at water sources that we know are unusable. And all we're doing is spending money on engineering and hydrogeologic consultants. We've done a pretty good job stopping that. We know where the good water is. We know where the bad water is. And it's a matter of just getting it headed in the right direction. And as you know, we only control one-third of what goes on with the board. And so, the big issue that we have is primarily Odessa can do just about anything it wants, as long as it doesn't cost the other two member cities any money.
Well, it has. Even if it didn't cost them any money, they didn't want it.
That's true.
But we've worked on that a little bit.
And in getting them to be more, as a group, and not three separate groups.
I think we've come a long way with that. I really do.
I really.
Because some of the things that we've been able to accomplish, some of the things that the Odessa group wanted to accomplish, could not have been done if it hadn't been helped from some of the members from Snyder and Big Spring.
My question to you is, what do you need from us? I mean, do y'all feel that y'all are out there by ourselves, or y'all need more cooperation from the city council? I mean, or y'all, do y'all feel y'all have the support of the city council?
I personally think we know how you guys feel, and I think we reiterate that at every meeting.
Okay. Other questions?
I think we approve to the next term for call out order from CRW D.
Okay, so just, we have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you. Thank you. We appreciate it, sir.
Okay. The rest of the committees, District Three, we're keeping those off, and Malcolm wanted to pull his off on the zoning board adjustment. Okay, do we have a motion for the rest of them?
We do section of D.
We do section of D. Yeah, we're going to interview that one.
And I think we should be holding up on, yeah, we're getting close to finding a chief, or...
Yes, ma'am.
So, we hold out on this appointment, or...
It's vacant. So we're going to have to put somebody in. We're going to take applications.
Providing the water.
Is it a position usually that the chief automatically takes on the 911?
We actually don't have anybody that's applied for, so it's vacant now. We're not going to fill it. But we will fill the board of survey, those that are considered who want to continue. Permian Basin MHMR, we're going to hold off on, and zoning board of adjustments, you wanted to hold off, and Councilmember Hamilton wanted to hold off. We'll approve the rest of them.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion in second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed unanimously. We've already had the citizen comments on non agenda items. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion in second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you all. I know it's not here. Thank you all for...